Good morning, everybody. I'd like to wel- welcome you, I'd like to welcome you to the, as soon as I get my agenda up here. I'd like to welcome you to January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. This is our formal weekly meeting, and before we get started, I will ask Carrie Ann Martin to, ask Carrie to actually lead us in the flag salute, so.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carrie. And at this time, I'd ask Commissioner Sterrett to introduce who'll be doing, and tell us a little bit about who'll be doing the invocation this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very happy to have with us a gentleman who's been instrumental in working in our downtown area. This is Jason Willoughby. He's been here for nine or ten years with his wife and three children. He's very active in promoting partnerships between civic and faith groups and working across denominational lines in the churches of McMinnville. One of the things that I've been impressed about is that Dr. Willoughby has been active in Mac City Pastors Organization. They patrol the downtown area on Third Street late each Friday night through early Saturday morning to provide a safe presence for people down there. He's also has a nonprofit called Reach the City Ministries, which was formed five years ago, and I've asked Pastor Willoughby to do an invocation, but I thought it was important for him to mention a little bit about the work you do on Third Street.
Sure. Yeah, and it is a privilege to serve our city and county and just be in partnership with folks like you who care deeply. And, you know, it's interesting, as we have patrolled the streets for almost three and a half years now, we're happy to report that it seems like there is more of a spirit of peace and less violence and less bad stuff going on in the middle of the night when we're, at least when we're out there. We see less police people because there just isn't the crisis. We haven't seen a fight in probably a year and a half with folks inebriated and, you know, so we're pleased to report. It seems like a lot of the issues are now during the daytime instead of the middle of the night, which is a change from, from three or four years ago. So, different challenges require different things, but it's just a privilege to serve, and I'm happy to report, good news, we're seeing progress, we're seeing some hope. So, we work together, and we're working humbly and listening and caring for people that have no one in their life to listen to them and be there in their, their crisis and their downtimes. It's amazing. Mary and I were talking about the repersonalization of social work. When we actually get to know people we're helping and build relationships and care for them, surprisingly, they respond better. So, that's, that's the lesson of the day, the challenge, the challenge of the decade here we're in. So, let's pray, shall we?
Yes.
Thank you. Dear Father in heaven, thank you for loving our county and its leaders and for always having our best interests in heart. We admit we are all in way over our heads and are facing problems bigger than any one of us. We admit we're in a season of entrenched ideologies and mutual suspicion towards each other, so please forgive us all, myself included, for being rather opinionated and not listening. Help us in spite of our, our problems. Grant us, grant our commissioners the ability to see what they normally can't see, to make better decisions than normally possible. Give them wisdom from on high for their meeting today to know what to do and what not to do, to discern what can be done and what can't yet be done. Guard them from fatal missteps and from doing more harm than good. As important people in positions of trust and authority, please doubly protect them from themselves. Reign in any bad tempers, harsh words, or inflated egos, and grant them to make headway in the coming days so that we, the weary citizenry, would be deeply comforted and pleasantly surprised by them. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. So, you should come every week and read that, Jason.
Such a great app.
It's like, oh, Lord, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for that, and thanks for the work that you do. Appreciate it. Thank you.
As, as we get started with the rest of our agenda, I'd like to ask everybody, just as a reminder, if you do have a cellphone on you, if we can have you silence it, please, for the courtesy of everybody, and if you do need to either make a call or, we ask you to pro, not to do texting in the chair councils, that you go out in the hall to do that. So, that being said, we'll move on to the public comment, and this is a minute time that we allow for public comment on any topic other than those on the agenda, quasi judicial land use matter, or a topic scheduled for a public hearing. Unless extended or restricted by the chair or majority of the board, public comment shall be limited to three minutes per person at this time. So, what I will ask is, I'll ask, I'll look here at my thing and my cards, and we have one request to speak during the public comment, Perry, and if I can get Scott Cunningham to come forward. So, Scott, come on forward, and for the record, can you go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. A point of order. I think Scott is here to address an agenda item.
I believe, believe that's true.
Is that true?
Is that, is it a specific?
Yeah, it's the, it's the task force.
Okay, well, that, that wasn't marked here on my list, so if you can wait till we get to that, Scott, and I'll call you back forward.
So, Mr. Chair, can I ask that that agenda item be moved up on, when we discuss it, so that those who are here for that can get back to work?
Okay, what we'll do is when we get to the non-consent agenda, or the, when we get Mary then to the non-consent agenda, on to her topic discussions, we will go ahead and move that, move that to the first, first item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that being said, then, is there anybody else who would like to speak on anything that is not on our agenda or any qua, non-quasi judicial issue? Hearing not, we'll move down to our consent agenda. Commissioners, we have several items on our agenda. We have the November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen informal session minutes and the minutes of the December thirteenth formal session. We have the approval for an agreement between Yamhill County and Sully Construction for construction services of the three thirty-three forty Kirby Street property in the amount of twenty-nine thousand fifty-five dollars, and approval of following changes to the Yamhill County Foundation, and that's to reappoint John Larson to position number two, term to expire July, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and reappointment of Gary Ruder to position six, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. So, Commissioners, would anybody like anything removed off the consent agenda?
I move approval.
Okay, we have a move that we will, we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let it show that Commissioner Sterrett, Commissioner Kula, and Commissioner Olson, all unanimously voted to approve the consent agenda. That takes us down under old business, and we have none, so that takes us to non-consent agenda. Other topics for information. So, that being said, we will move, as we said earlier, we will move item number six to the beginning, and that's discussion and consideration of formation of a task force to consider moving county offices out of downtown McMinnville. And so, Scott, I think that's the one you probably wanted to testify on, so.
My name is Scott Cunningham. I live at one-one-five Southeast Mountain View Lane here in McMinnville. I am also the owner of Community Plate Restaurant downtown Third Street, as well as we have started work on building out of a new restaurant, Pizza Capo, which will be actually right across the street from Community Plate. So, previously been on the board of the MDA for six and a half years, as well as the president of the MDA for two of those years. So, Casey graciously asked me to come and speak a little bit from my standpoint as a small business owner in the downtown, asking, you know, what my opinion is of the county offices being in the downtown, and I think ultimately, I have a couple of different viewpoints on that, but I'll try to keep them brief. I do see that the county offices, I would say, being consolidated in downtown McMinnville, but spread throughout, I would say, the core, do impact our ability to grow as a downtown. I think we've seen with the recent development of the Atticus Hotel that the natural growth for the downtown is to head towards Fourth Street and Fifth Street. We actually, in looking for spaces that Pizza Capo would go into, looked at one of the buildings on Fourth Street as well. Unfortunately, the building needed way beyond the amount of work for us to actually go into there, but especially with Algori Brewing being on the other end of Fourth Street as well, I think we're seeing the natural progression of our downtown kind of moving this direction. And when you look at it, though, many of the block faces right now do include county offices or support two county offices. And I could definitely see in the long term, because I assume this will be a conversation very much like the bypass, where it starts here, and who knows, in twenty years, we may be breaking ground on, on the offices, the new offices. So, with that being said, I think it's important for us to take this initial step to really take a look at it. And I think one of the things that could be done is that the, the county offices could be moved entirely out of the downtown. I'm not sure if that is the right thing. I think looking at the land that the county already has and owns, and how we could better use that land, whether it's building up in a, a new building that would be able to withstand an earthquake and have all the updated technology may be the right call. It might be moving it into an entirely another area that would be as easily as accessible as it is here. And because I understand that one of the reasons we have continued to kind of consolidate here is that it allows for one place for people to come from the surrounding areas to get their services, and I think that that is very important for services to be very accessible. And so, with that being said, I think one of the suggestions that I might give for us to also look at is potentially taking some of our services and making them mobile, so that they could go into the, the farther communities. You know, if you think about like the, the bus that, you know, you, you have the, the give blood type of thing, where it shows up and it has the facilities to be able to take care of people, I think that might be something where we take some of those services that need to be met, but actually meet people in their home communities. And I think that might be something that we could achieve in a much quicker pace than what we're considering today. But I definitely think the start of a task force to really take a look at, at, at all the options would be a very good thing.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Chair, Joya Goodrum, the president of the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce, has sent me an email with some comments that she spoke with board members last night and wanted me to share. So, I'm reading this cold. I haven't had a chance to look at it, so I'm going to just, so bear with me. Here are some comments I heard from board members and business owners regarding their thoughts on the county moving from the downtown area. This is not a complete or official survey of our membership. Quote, "We have a vibrant, award-winning downtown that works. Why mess with it?" This is a direct quote, quote unquote. Businesses in the downtown area would be impacted if there wasn't a plan to ensure the downtown stays vibrant. Seven hundred employees abruptly exiting the district would be devastating to businesses. Many employees walk to restaurants, coffee shops, and stores during their lunch breaks. Who would fill that void? What do the county employees think about leaving downtown? Downtown businesses could be significantly hurt unless new businesses with an employee base were brought in to replace those county employees. Many of the buildings in downtown are not set up to bring in big businesses with a large employee base." Quote, "It will severely impact the daily sales of my business. The county should be mindful of the community they are part of, the impact to our local economy and the businesses in the area," and that is a quote from Peter Kircher, Golden Valley Brewery. "The county moving employees would, quote, 'impact my business. I do not understand their reasoning for wanting to move them.'" That is from Cindy Lorenzen at The Sage. Quote, this is from Lucetta Elmer, Union Block and Douglas on Third and the Oak businesses. "This will definitely impact Union Block and every other food business downtown. We have a vital local economy, not just a tourist economy. I would hate to see this go away." And Joya Goodrum says, "I've asked the businesses I spoke with to talk with their staff and other connections to get feedback." And so, that's pretty much what she had to say, just some, sort of an informal survey to add to our information.
Do you, do you have that at all, or is there any way you can get that over to your email to print?
It's on my email.
Okay, it's on your email, so we make sure that gets, becomes part of the record.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I think I have, I think I have one other. Michaela, is this one you want to speak on? Come on forward, and of course, name it, name and address for the record, please.
Michaela Frye, four-three-four Northeast Evans Street. I will just make it a disclaimer, I am a county employee, and I do work for county councils, but I'm here as a citizen today. Um, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, yeah.
Um, so this all, the reason we talked today is, it all came from me having dinner downtown on Third. Talking to my roommate about work, what's going on, and the one thing that came, I was, you know, kind of sharing about this task force, just keeping my roommate in the know of what's going on, and our waitress came up after she'd heard, and she said, "Do you..." And our waitress came up after she'd heard, and she said, "Do you know that what that would do to us? Do you know that what that would do to our business? This specific location hires new, hires extra people for specifically the noon and five o'clock shifts because of the county employees, the people who are there." So as, it's devastating to them. So as you listen to me today, remember that I'm in the legal field, so things that make the most sense to me are data, numbers, specifically dollar signs, as well as, as well as serving the people. In the downtown quarters, we currently have six vacant commercial spaces, three of which have been vacant for over sixteen months, one of which has been vacant for over two years. There's a commercial property on Fifth and Galway that has had a for rent sign up three times in the last two years. Downtown McMinnville is not a shortage of space for the private sector. The county employs seven hundred-ish people, seven hundred-ish people who eat, shop, and recreate in the McMinnville downtown area. Our HR department and, as well as myself, go Union Block every day. Adding up how much money we spent there was a little worrisome for me. But, you know, between four of us, around four hundred dollars a month, and that's just for four employees. Imagine, you know, how many other employees are going there as well. What would happen to our small businesses if the county employees were moved? Think about who and what will be affected. Think about the people who we serve every day, and think about the cost to taxpayers. Take time to think about our current system and why the commissioners and employees that came well before us chose to plant the county where it is today. As you all are future planners, you guys say it and talk about it all the time, so were they. I'm sure they, they anticipated and sensed a growth and progression, which is why they planted us where we are. Why try and change a system that is working and thriving and certainly not broken? Moving the county, the county out of the downtown corridor would not only harm the people you employ, but the public we serve and the small businesses owners we claim to support. It would also harm the taxpayers, some of which have voted and support you guys daily. Just, I just would like to kind of share that story and, you know, kind of a different perspective from somebody who's not only county employee, but also a citizen who loves living and working in downtown.
Okay, thank you, Michaelie.
Thank you, Michaelie.
And then Philip, did you have? Did you want to speak?
I'm not sure if it made it up here.
No, I, I didn't get a card. But what we can do is you can come forward, state your name and address for the record, and then if we can ask you to fill out after you're done a brown card, and get it to Carolina over here.
I forgot to explain.
But you can go ahead and.
There's a lot of steps, right?
There are a lot of steps.
And mine involves filling my water cup.
Well, good morning, Happy New Year. My name is Philip Higgins. I live at four-one-five West Edgewood Drive in beautiful Newburgh, Oregon. I've been a lifelong county resident, graduated from Yamhill Carlton High School, and also George Fox College pre-university. So I was intrigued by the, the commission, and what it's talking about for the potential to move county offices out of downtown into a centralized location, and how that basically dovetails with some of the things that I've been doing in the city of Newburgh and then across Oregon and Washington. I think, and disclosure, I'm, I'm a commercial real estate broker, so I, I handle these sort of adaptive reuse things and have for the last twenty-three years of, of my practice. You know, I think the concerns are valid in terms of the egress of downtown from, you know, county employees and the vacuum that that could potentially create with local merchants. That being said, with an eye towards an adaptive reuse process that would create, you know, a twenty-four hour downtown, as opposed to a weekday nine-to-five downtown, I think that the, the lift in everybody's, you know, economics would certainly benefit from, you know, studying this in greater depth. I think that there's an opportunity that exists for the county to relocate into a centralized location, create an accessible and LEED-certified project where they can serve the community, also in a way that's likely, you know, economically neutral to the taxpayers, and then embark on an adaptive reuse progress, project downtown with the assets that they have, where they can actually create revenue through a public-private partnership to, to fund other projects for the county. So I, I can see this, you know, this planning taking place in such a way that it actually generates revenue for the county as opposed to being a drain on it. And, and I say this not just from a, you know, gee, this is, this is a hopeful thing that maybe this can be done. I, I've actually seen this being done, and I actually know people who've participated in these sort of programs, and have actually achieved these sort of results. So I, I just kind of wanted to, to, to share those things today, and so love, love to weigh in in any way I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, those are the only people that we have that has, that have said they would like to testify on this, on this issue. So that being said, what I'll do is I'll return this issue around to the commission for discussion and consideration, and this was asked to be put on the agenda for, by Commissioner Kula. So Casey, I think I'll go ahead and let you, you start first.
Yeah, and I wanted to also open up, Ken Huffer, county administrator, has been, I think, working on what a proposal to us would look like for a space needs analysis.
Do you want me to?
And, yeah, I'm happy to have your input now, if you would mind.
All right.
Wouldn't mind.
You know, it's something that we had talked about at Tuesday's informal briefly. As you may recall, last year during the budget process for the commissioners that were present and approved that, we did, as part of the approval for the capital improvement projects, we included funding for doing a space needs analysis to, you know, kick off the process of looking at our current space, identifying needs, projecting some growth, and, and basically doing an, an assessment. With other projects that have been underway, and then also with, you know, several transitions that were going to occur the first of this year, and, you know, it, you know, we decided to hold off on doing, getting into kicking that project off until the new year, and with me coming in as the county administrator. We do have funds available and for kicking this off. The next step, like I talked about on Tuesday, was really to develop that RFP that, you know, to go out, to have someone in to, to do this study for the county. And what we had talked about on Tuesday as the next step was for me to work with Justin and with Joe Moore, our facilities manager, to start developing a skeleton for a scope of work of what that RFP is going to look like, and then to hopefully schedule a work session with the board at, at the end of February, toward the end of February, to finalize what that scope of work would look like, so then we could go out to a, you know, an RFP process, request for proposal process, to find someone to, to come in and work on that.
Okay, thank you, Ken. So I'll.
And then what I would like to do is, I'd love to see us form a task force to provide internal and external voices to the, the person who's doing that work on behalf of the county.
And that could be.
Because there's a lot of valuable voices in our county, both internally and externally.
So this is to have a task force to be part of the space needs analysis project?
Right.
Okay, my understanding is the space needs analysis is done by an architectural firm, which a planning firm? So how does that, how does, how would that integrate anyone other than that specialty?
We could do this much in the same way as other planning efforts, that if you're, if there's a public input component that we would like written into the scope of work, you know, whether that's a task force, because a lot of it is going to really start off with that internal assessment, too. Because, of course, we have to look at the, the business operations and the business needs, you know, and, and so you'd have that twofold group, where you'd have an, an internal group working with the contractor, you know, on the actual physical, you know, because you, you bring in an architect, they're not going to know the various programs that are being run out of Evans Street, you know, so of course, you know, Silas's team is going to be integral to be able to provide input on that and their, their needs and where they see future growth. And then if there's a, you know, with compiling all that data and moving that through, and then if there's a public component, you know, we could include that in the scope of work. You know, so I, you know, again, I think we could do that at that work session when we're building that scope of work for kicking off this project, and then look at where the public involvement and the task force or committees could come into play on this.
Yeah. I, I guess just some comments, me and I have to go back to what Ken said. I appreciate Commissioner Kula bringing this in front of the commission. I, I think to me, it's a little bit early to form a task force for just the reasons Ken said, is that, you know, part of it, we have to know what we have, we have to know what we're going to have to have, we have to know what programs we have to offer. Other things like both Commissioner Kula has and, and that I had gotten was, you know, how much is our property worth, what the real market value is, what the assessed value is, what we're losing in taxes, how many pieces of property we own, how many pieces of property we're leasing, and because I'm a firm believer that the county needs to consolidate services, and I'm a believer that probably the best bet is going to be outside of the downtown core area. But like I said, until we get that information from a consultant, we won't know. They may suggest that we look at a large piece of property, like where the city now has the old community center that they're looking at, isn't suiting their needs, maybe tearing that down and building a new building on that spot. So I guess my thing about it is I, I totally agree that we need to have a workforce or a work program, but in order to do that, we have to identify what we want them to do, what their parts are going to be played, what we are going to task them to do, and until we get an RFP out on the road and we get back as a part of the statement of work, saying we aren't going to have so many public sets, much like we did the master transportation plan, much like we did the transit plan, we really don't have enough figures or enough information, I think, right now to put a task force together. So what I would like to do is, I would like to recommend that we continue moving and let Ken give us a better idea of when that RFP can be on the streets, so we can award the RFP, and then a schedule with the consultant of where, where we, where we would go, and at that time determine what part is the public going to play, because I agree they have to play a big part, the business owners, the general public. But I'm, Larry, right now, actually forming a task force when we don't really know what we want them to do, to do.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree with that supposition. I think that this has been in the works for a while. I know that, that Ken has been working on just trying to get a lay of the land, and we don't have that, until we have that. But I think the suggestion that we have a work session to determine the scope of work, so in other words, without that, which is what we would all do, I think it's a little premature to move on to the next phase, which is to involve community, because that RFP is not going to involve community at this stage. It's going to involve someone who, an architect and of space planning concern. So the work session is what I think we're talking about, scheduling a work session for us to talk about what do we want to see in that scope of work for the RFP.
I agree with you, Commissioner, because I've been involved with many of these with the city, and that's the first step. The staff has to get together, you have to get a consultant, and no matter what it is. But when we did our city, the Bonn, the Bonn Navy for the Streets, before we put groups together to look at that, we had to have the information for them to look at. So what I would like to do is have Ken come back to us, have our administrator come back to us about when that work's scheduled, when that work session can be scheduled. And I think Tuesday, that's what I've been trying to move for, for a couple of years, that we allocate more of our Tuesday meetings towards real work sessions, whether it be a two-hour work session, a three-hour work session, because I think this rolls in very good, the strategic space needs analysis rolls in very good into the goal setting standard. This is one, going to be a major goal. The project may take two years before we totally determine what we want to do, but I think we have to go through and use the facts and the figures and the base to move in that direction. So I would like to get the, get the, the staff, get staff and get the consensus around the, with the commissioners to have this, the county administrator come back to us of when a work schedule could be, and how we would approach this whole process. And then from that, we can determine what kind of work groups or what kind of public input we may want to have, so.
Do we need a motion?
May I respond?
Go ahead, Casey.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so the assessor's office says that there's, Yamhill County government owns twenty-seven properties in what would be considered the downtown core area. They don't have numbers, they don't have assessed value on some of them, and this is from Jeff Ivy, just, yeah, okay.
I reviewed it.
Okay, I was hoping so, but, oh, it says it here. And he explained that some properties don't have a value because we, he doesn't need to, because they're exempt, and so there's other places to do that work. But the, I think of the, the assessed value of the twenty-seven properties is four-point three million dollars. And we are, we are spread out among a lot of houses right now as well. IT is in two houses, I believe, as well as having infrastructure in other buildings. HHS is spread across many buildings as well. I personally think that HHS can be more effective in what we want them to do, which is to promote the health of Yamhill County residents by being more consolidated. But because we are doing so many things, inevitably, we have spread out for HHS. And I really value their work, so I want to make sure that we can even do a better job on it. What I think is that we have our three brains here, but out in the community, there's a lot of other people who know a lot of other things, including what questions we want to ask a consultant. I know that I don't know all the questions to ask consultants, and I'm sure that you know many more, but I feel like forming a task force, and if you like, we can change the name of it so that it doesn't have the explicit purpose of moving out of the downtown core. What I would like to have a task force formed so that we can get those questions from people who are a lot smarter, frankly, than me on these issues. So that's what I would like to see, and I'd like to make a motion for that, and I'm happy to have discussion after that, too.
Okay, make the motion.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that the county form a task force to advise a consultant on space needs analysis. And I can open it for whoever's.
Okay. We have, we have a motion on the table now. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, so I'll entertain a vote that we go ahead and form as a task, task force for the purpose of helping the consultants move forward on, on the, looking at, moving out of the downtown core area. So that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
So let it show that the motion failed. Commissioner Kula voted aye, and Commissioner Sterick, Commissioner Olson voted nay. So, but I think we still need to move forward where, with what we've talked about of having staff come back, back to us with a plan of work. And then I think at that time, Casey, with a plan of work, then we can determine what role that they're going to, what role they're going to play, they're going to play in.
And, and I guess one thing that I would add, you know, because as far as the, having input into the selection of an RFP or helping to do that, we do have prior examples, like the RFP that we did for economic development, had a component to where we also had citizens who participated in the, the selection in the RFP process. So I just wanted to throw that out, that, that when I come back for the scope of work, that might be another idea to bring to the table that we could incorporate into the RFP process.
And I think that's, that's a very, that's a very good idea, and that'll address, address what you wanted, Commissioner, and it also addresses the whole process.
And that's a really good example of how we have incorporated people from the community to make, help us inform what we're doing, so, but it's after that, in other words, it's in that step.
And that's the same thing we do with the transit, transit plan, that we had the consultants, we had a group, several groups, I think, twelve different groups who worked with the vendors to get the input and do that, so we knew what form our whole master transit plan should take.
Yeah.
So that will come. I think it's just basically a process. It's a process issue, because they're employed, especially downtown, after what Michaelie said and everything. I've heard the same comments, and I've heard comments both ways. It's like, we're using vital retail space and other space downtown that's affecting the vibrancy, but if we take that many, you know, employees out of town, are we really killing the vibrancy? So I think that's a big issue that we're going to deal with, and the, with citizens and businesses that are going to be affected. Their input is definitely very critical to this, to this process, and I think it's just a when, when that is done, when that process is done.
Okay.
Okay. So let, moving forward, then we moved, I, as I said, we moved item number six up to item, item number one, so we'll go back to item number two on our agenda, and item number two on our.
That'd be number one.
Oh, excuse me, item number one on our.
Not so fast.
Well, yeah. Item number one.
We could get other people out of here, too.
Consideration of the two thousand Board of Commissioners liaison responsibilities, and I thought you guys, when I was gone Tuesday, would have that all taken care of, but. So what I did is I asked the commissioners and to look at, we've had some discussions as far as the format goes, and that's not what we're here to discuss today. We're actually here to discuss the areas of liaison themselves, because it's evident the format may be a different format, that solves several needs, but there were a couple different format, that solves several needs, but there were a couple holes that I had left as I looked at these responsibilities, left on this, and what I'd like to do is address those holes first, and then talk about any other comments on any of the other assignments, if that's okay with the other two commissioners. So the first hole that we have is on our economic development tourism area, there is the actual member of the Willamette Valley Workforce Partnership Board of Directors, and I have signed that to myself, but as the part of the Willamette Workforce Partnership, there is actually the Jobs Council, which is a separate entity, and the county, the Jobs Council has both a member and an alternate from Yamhill County. So I've left those two blanks, I didn't know if one of you had a specific interest of being, on the member and the other being an alternate, or, so I'd like your input, I'd like your input on that one, or what you think would be, who would like to serve what.
Mr. Chair, I would like to recommend that that also be part of the liaison duties of the economic development liaison under the same, under the same category.
Okay, I will look at that.
I got to stop.
I do believe, I do believe that the way the...
Good idea.
And I will have to check on that, Mary, and we can put that down for now, but I do believe the member representing the Jobs Council is different than the actual board member, because the board member automatically sits on the Job Council, but I think they want another representative, but we can put that down for now, we'll put mine down, and then I'll, we'll verify that.
Thank you.
If, if it doesn't work because you'd already be on the Jobs Council, I'm happy to be the member.
Okay. But I will check that, I'll check that to make sure. The next hole we have, it's in red, but the only reason it's in red is the Food Advisory Committee, and it's shown as an inactive committee, and the reason that I put that on there is because it turns out, if you look at our committee book, we've identified, I think Ken and I identified nine or 10 different committees that were inactive, but there's not, some were made inactive by staff, even though there was a board order ordaining them. Some were made inactive because there just wasn't any agenda items. So what I talked to Ken about doing is working with Christian and going through and seeing, are those, some of those committees really needed? If they need to be inactive, we'll keep them inactive. If not, we'll rescind the, we'll do something, rescind the board order, but we have several of those I think just need, they just need a cleaning up, and this Food Services Advisory Committee was one. As a matter of fact, I think that Silas is in the room, but I think that was recommended several years ago from Laura, according to the notes from Lauren, Silas said that Food Service Advisory Committee be made inactive, and there was a board order covering it. So I don't know, that's one of the issues, and Ken can explain it, whether staff can inactivate a committee when it's really covered under, created under a board order.
Yeah, so the plan is, is I'll go through and look at some of those, and then, in speaking with county council, and whether or not we need to come back or take some type of, where the board needs to take some type of official action to inactivate, or, so.
Okay, the next one I have is, next to is under the Sheriff's Department, that's the Emergency Operations Management, the Yamhill Communications Agency Executive Board. I know I would have my recommendations, but I would, my recommendations would actually be, since we're really not through with our Emergency Operations Management, even though it fall under the Sheriff's Department, that Commissioner Sterrett stay as liaison to emergency management, and that the YCOM Executive Board, which I was a member of, fall to Commissioner Kula, but I will ask for your two input on that. Because Mary, I assume you would like to stay with the Operations Emergency Management?
Yes.
Okay. Casey, are you okay with the YCOM Executive Board?
I'm happy to learn.
Okay. So Ken, if you can make those changes in, please. And then we have the Fair Board. The Fair Board is staying open. That's one that's kind of, the way I understand it, it's just kind of always either fallen to the chair, whoever wanted to, whoever wanted to do it. So I'd like to discuss the Fair Board a little bit and see who would like to be the liaison to the Fair Board.
Mr. Chair, I think that, looking at the scope of what the fair has become in our community in terms of economic development, to me, it, it makes sense to keep it with economic development since it's got such a huge footprint. So I would make a recommendation that since you're doing economic development, that that also be part of your portfolio.
Okay, that, I don't have an issue, issue with that, but I want to make sure you agree with that. Okay, so can we make sure that I get the Fair Board?
And I'm happy to take on the Newburgh Riverfront Master Plan.
Ad hoc committee?
Advisory Committee, oh.
Good. No, I think that's great, because yesterday I had a meeting at, in Newburgh with their Visioning Committee, and they asked, they're in a panic, because they have a meeting coming up Monday, and we didn't have a person, so they'll be very happy to hear that you're on board.
Great, yeah, I've talked with the incoming mayor about it, and then I realized, oh, I'm not the liaison to this. Okay, I better wait.
Okay, so you are, you are going to be now.
All right, I'm excited.
Okay, then the, this is, the next one, the Yamhill County Foundation, that one is assigned to me, just because that one, for years, has not showed up on our list of liaison assignments, but it is actually responsibility of the county commissioners when it was turned over by the Rotary to the county commission. So, and it does specifically say that the Chair of the Board of Commissioners is the liaison to the Yamhill County Foundation. So I didn't even know that one existed, to tell you the truth, until I started looking through the book, so.
I'm fine with that.
I put myself with that one. Well, it does say it has to be the Chair of the Board, so.
Perfect.
Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, or COG, we need to assign a board member to COG. It's really a partnership, and we have our main partnerships like AOC and COG and NACO and Soil and Water Conservation, so it doesn't state that it has to be a particular, like the Board Chair, it does state, we just need to have a board, a commissioner on the Board of Council of Governments, so.
Chief of Staff.
I just, I've had some concerns about our, our financial contribution and our involvement in COG, and whether or not it's something we need to continue, so I don't know that I would be fully invested, and to be perfectly honest, because I do have, again, these ongoing questions as to whether or not it's, it's something we, we really need to be part of.
I have, you know, my own things, but I was going to say that, I was going to use as a, as a reason that you're both on the, I think the Board of Directors for AOC, is that, no, what's the?
COG is different, totally different.
COG is different.
But you're, you both sat at the Legislative Committee, but that was different.
That's totally different, different organization.
I was just thinking that I'm happy to do COG, to join COG.
Council of Governments, we are represented by them.
Yes, exactly.
So Ken, will you put Casey down as the representative?
I was feeling left out with those intergovernmental agencies.
Oh, trust me, there'll be plenty of those coming your way.
You haven't touched the surface yet.
And I thought you did a great job, both of you, at that.
Okay, now, a couple things, as I, we already talked about, that I would suggest is that we, besides having staff and look at the inactive commission, is, do we, oh, I guess that was my only comment, so that said, I will open it up around for any other comments, for any other changes you would like to see on the list of responsibilities that we want to discuss.
Mr. Chair, I typically, at least in, in recent history, there's been a rhyme and reason to the, what they call the big three. That's Public Works, Health and Human Services, and Community Justice. I think that with Commissioner Kula being given two of the big three, in addition to the responsibilities of learning the ropes and the time commitment that, that County College will take, I think it is perhaps asking a lot, when we've never really given one commissioner two of the big three. I, I don't see that you have one of the big three, and I would make a recommendation that whether it's Public Works or, or Community Justice, that there be that separation really there, and also the, the responsibilities spread across three people instead of two people.
Okay, I would, I would suggest, Mary, and I think that's a very good comment, I would suggest on that, because I do have a year, and you mentioned that Commissioner Kula does have a lot of learning, that I've been with criminal justice for a year, that I retain criminal justice, and then you will have Health and Human Services, I will have Criminal Justice, and we give Public Works to Commissioner Kula. So, you know, that's a whole department.
But Commissioner Sterrett said Community Justice?
I'm sorry.
Are we, are we encompassing all of it?
Yeah, I'm using that as the...
As the overall.
Yeah, just to clarify, Criminal Justice includes the DA's Office, Sheriff's Office, and Department of Community Justice.
And Community Justice, so I'm, I guess Criminal Justice is, sorry.
So what I'll do is I'll leave that up.
Before we go, because that seems like a, a big one, and I wanted to ask, Chair Olson shifted Water Task Force, but as a former member of the Water Task Force, I really appreciated what you did on it. Are you, do you, are you okay with me?
Thank you.
Or do you want to keep it?
No, thank you for even asking, and I appreciate the fact that you were willing to be part of it.
It was so great.
Yeah.
It is so great.
And you have an interest in it, and I would be happy to, to see what, what direction you would take it.
Okay.
And so I'm encouraged that you're interested.
Okay.
Okay, now, Casey, what I'll say, I know you showed a big interest in bridges and Public Works and roads.
Sure.
So I would then take, stay with the Community Justice, that's the courts, you know, Juneon and everything, and we will let you spend your first year with County College, concentrating on Public, Public Works.
Okay.
As one of the three.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. To, to be clear, though, County College is 72 hours, so.
That's only, that's only official.
I'm just saying.
It's a lot of, County College is a lot of work. For two people to have been through it, it's a lot more than you think.
Yeah.
I wouldn't consider it 72 hours, it's a lot more.
Are you excited? Prepare yourself.
Yeah.
You'll enjoy it, though.
That's why I'm watching the clock, because we head out this afternoon.
That's right.
I would never recommend any question, I'd have never recommended any question that they don't go through County College.
Yeah.
Okay, so Ken, can you make those changes, and then we can, if that's, with those changes made and those amendments made, I will entertain a motion that we, that we approve the Commissioner responsibilities for 2019.
Christian, did you see one that?
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be a liaison for treasurer.
I was going to ask you about that.
Well, we're all, we're all really, oh, did I have me down as liaison or treasurer?
Historically, there has been, but I didn't see one checked off here.
I think you put it on as the Investment Committee, where you're the voting member and we are members.
So typically, the voting member is the liaison.
It's the liaison, so that's why it isn't listed separately.
So are you going to?
That would be Mary.
Yes, I'm staying with investment.
You'll be?
The liaison to the treasurer.
Okay, got it.
Did you say the voting member is liaison?
Yes.
Yes, that's normal. Ken, that might be a good idea to list, to list that treasurer on there separately as the liaison, because technically treasurer is a county department.
So did I hear?
Right now, it has Mary listed as the voting member?
It should be.
It should be me, it should be me.
Okay, I'll make that change.
And then Mary would be non-voting.
And Case will be non-voting.
And then there's...
Correct, okay.
I think the last one, and I'm not sure if it just didn't get transposed over with some of the edits, but under Extension Service, Board of Directors, I know with some of these other boards that we convened, that, you know, there's times that the co, you know, the Vice Chair steps in and chairs those committees, and we didn't have anything filled in on that. Did you just want?
No, matter of fact, the reason we did is because when, when, when you broke out into local districts, and I had them, I think, up in red below, and you just broke them out into local districts, so they weren't in red, so I didn't pick them up. So we do need a Chair, a Vice Chair, and a member of the OSU Extension Service District Board of, Board of Directors, and I know we're all involved in it.
So it is recently, it was last year, that board was chaired by the Vice Chair of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
And then, that would mean, Mary would be the Chair of that.
Mary, you would be the Chair of the Extension Service?
Commissioner Kula would be the Vice Chair.
And I would be the member, and I'd be the member.
I mean, that's how it's been traditionally distributed.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, got those?
Noted.
So no other comment, then I'll, I'll entertain, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion that we approve.
Historically, but that's not how it was reflected here, so if you want to talk about that, now would be the time.
No, I'm fine with it. I'm sorry.
We've got a little side conversations going on over there.
Chair Olson, were you saying something? Forgive me.
I would move approval of the liaison responsibilities as noted for 2019.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the Board of Commissioners unanimously approved the responsibility, liaison, more responsibilities for 2019. So now Ken will work with Carrie. As you can imagine, because we're involved in so many outside activities, there's a lot of letters that Carrie Hinton has to do to all these different agencies, letting them know who our representative is, so she'll be able to get started on those now, and get those out. Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners, for participating in that. So that will then take us to our, now item number two, Mary, the consideration of accepting a bid from Andy Metcalf Construction Company and authorizing a notice of intent to award for the Health and Human Services Tykor Building Remodel in the amount of $345,322. So Mary, you're in charge of Health and Human Services, I see Silas here, so do you want to do it, Francis, you want Silas to do it?
Well, I think we discussed this at informal, and if there are any questions that you have, Mr. Chair, that...
No, I don't have any questions. This has happened to be one, and as I said before, I'm really not for remodeling buildings, but that building I happened to look at and the changes, and I looked at what the statement of work was and the bid documents, and I do believe that any money we put into that building, if we should relocate someplace else, and looking at the fair market value, that we will get probably 100% of our investment back out of that building if we ever sold it, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve that agreement, so.
I move approval of item D2, which is consideration of accepting a bid from Andy Metcalf Construction Company and authorizing a, a notice of intent to award for Health and Human Services Tykor Building remodel in the amount of $345,322.
Okay, I have motion, motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that that item passed the Commission unanimously with Commissioner Sterrett, Commissioner Kula, and Commissioner Olson, all voting in the affirmative. Okay, that takes us to item number three, and this is consideration of amendment to the capital improvement project list, which is Board Order 18202, and increase the amount available for the Tykor Building remodel, and that was when we just approved in item D2, from $190,000 to $267,661, and the remaining $77,661 of the product cost is in the HHS and can be paid for out of the HHS budget. So that is a separate, separate item, so, as, do we have any discussion or questions?
I would move approval of item D3, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have, we have, Commissioner Sterrett made a motion that we approve item number D3 for the amendment for the 2018-2019 Capital Improvement Project List, which is Board Order 18202. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chair, just a point of order for, to ask for discussion after the motion?
Oh, is there any discussion?
Commissioner?
Uh, no.
No discussion, okay. So we had a motion, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, aye, I mean, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the Commission unanimously approved the consideration of that amendment. That will take us to item number four, consideration to authorize notice of intent to award the Amhales West Sider Trail Pedestrian Bridge Project Obeck Consulting Engineers for Engineering Services, and we do have a couple of requests to speak on that item, and so the first one I will call to the table, and this is just regarding the contract, is Brian Schmidt. So Brian, if you can come up and state your name and address, please.
Good morning. Brian Schmidt, 7580 Northeast Hendricks, Carlton, Oregon 97111.
Good morning, Chair and Board. I'm just here because I heard about a grant that was referenced in the Lubbock remand decision last month, and I, it's my understanding that it's up for a vote today, and I want to...
Mr. Chair, that is a topic that is likely to come back before the Board in what is now going to be a quasi-judicial land use hearing. It would be inappropriate to discuss any of the items related to the remand in this forum today, since we're not in the formal land use hearing process. So this topic on the agenda is the approval of the engineering services agreement, so I'd ask if you keep your comments limited to your thoughts on the approval of that agreement, and refrain from discussing any of the items related to the recent remand from Lubbock.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, just clarification. Christian? Christian, my concerns are related to that juxtaposition of these two considerations, and is what I was going to make comment about, and I'm wondering how we divorce the two when they are apparently connected.
Well, as I said on Tuesday, um, if for purposes of awarding the contract, there, there is no connection. There are, they are two separate, uh, two separate processes, they're sort of operating on parallel tracks, but there is no element or aspect of what's been remanded from Luba that is having a, or would have a direct impact on the award, or discussion or consideration of the award by the Board of the Engineering Services Agreement under a separate grant agreement.
And one of, one of the, just for my own edification, one of the concerns that I had brought up regarding, excuse me, Mr. Schmidt, I've just got to clarify for my own.
We need to make sure.
Um, is that one of the concerns that I had regarding grants that we had accepted was what would happen if we had a, a glitch in the works and this, uh, trail does not go forward because of a variety of different, uh, challenges? So one of the things that I was concerned about is, would we have to repay money back that we had accepted? And we did have certain concerns about deadlines, and we, that happened last year, so I don't.
And that would be best question, I think, addressed to Carrie, who's our special projects manager and is working with ODOT on the Connect Oregon Six Grant, specifically to, to try and answer those questions for you.
So would it be appropriate, then, in light of what Mr. Schmidt is bringing forward, for us to ask Carrie about the, uh, criteria of that grant in terms of what would happen if we were not able to move forward with a project and we'd accepted, we've moved forward on a contract with a grant that we would then have to?
If the, if the development of the trail, uh, didn't proceed forward, that would be an appropriate question for her.
So as far as Mr. Schmidt's testimony at this point, uh, where does that come down because they are related?
The, the, the discussion needs to be limited to the grant and the award of the contract as it relates to the grant.
It's a fine line.
It is, it is. And we're trying to make sure that we don't further complicate either of the processes by making sure we don't cross those lines.
By doing too much.
So as far as, as advice regarding the continuation of this testimony, how do we get the spirit of what Mr. Schmidt is trying to say without running afoul of that?
He needs to limit his comments to the award of the professional services contract under the Connect Six Grant.
So I think you understand, you understand that.
Do you, because I don't.
Well, I thought you guys might be limited by rules, but I didn't think that I was, as a citizen.
Well, we'll be having a separate land use hearing on the Luba remand. Any comments related to that part of the process would be appropriate, uh, to be made at that time.
So the comments, Brian, the comments you should be making now should be limited to whether the county should or should not receive, receive the grant, and as far as.
We've already received the grant, the question now is whether or not the county wants to proceed with awarding a contract to Obeck.
Obeck, right.
And using grant funds for the, for that purpose.
Yeah, so that's my question, what would happen if we can't go forward with this project? We don't know if we can go forward with it or not yet, so.
At this point, we have, we have no indications that the project's not going forward, we do have another step in the process. Um, but there's, there's nothing prohibiting or limiting the county from proceeding with this step in the process, uh, at the moment.
That wasn't my question.
I'm sorry.
What if the county cannot go forward? Let's say there's just a point one five percent chance that it cannot go forward. What if? Then, then what?
Again, there, that, that is really a separate question as to, as to whether or not we can or want to proceed with the grant. If the county wants to proceed with the grant, there's no limitation on its ability to do that. If the commissioners want to go ahead and, and, and award this contract to Obeck, there's, there's no limitation. And, and whether or not the trail ultimately proceeds, um, isn't really a factor in, in that discussion. It could be a factor in terms of what we might have to do with the grant money, and if you want to ask Carrie about that, I don't know. I want to know that detail, and maybe that would help inform and answer your question.
Yeah, I think we ought to know that. If, if I'm gonna do something, I want to know the outcome and what the risks are.
Okay, what I'll do for this, this time, Brian, you just can stay right there, because you're in a testimony, but we've had a, a question directed towards, uh.
I'd love to hear.
Carrie, answer, Carrie, if, maybe you can address that, and if, if you have, maybe Ken can help you out, so, go a- go ahead.
Do you want to come forward?
We need to come forward, Carrie.
And if you could just identify yourself for the record, so we have that in the.
You, you don't have that yet.
Well, just so we know who's speaking.
We know who you are.
We know who you are, we know where to find you.
Uh, Carrie Martin, I am the Grants and Special Projects Manager for Yamhill County. And my address? Okay, so, um, in the agreement that we have with Connect Oregon, um, there is nothing, there are no specific guidelines in terms of if, uh, this is not completed, you have to pay it back. If this is not completed, you have to pay it back. There is a broad understanding of substantial completion, and that would be a very subjective thing for ODOT to make a determination on. So for instance, uh, the grant covers the design and engineering of three bridges and the construction of the largest bridge. So if we were to only be able to do the design and engineer, but not the construction, would ODOT consider that to be substantial completion? Or would they find that we have defaulted on that agreement in some way? That would be something we would have to specifically pose to ODOT, because there are no guidelines right now in the agreement that we have. As far as the Luba remand, um.
No, Carrie, I don't think we, Carrie, talking about the Luba.
It's, we're not talking about the substantive issues involved in the remand.
Right.
And if you have something else you want to.
Just simply that the, the, the grant project, um, as we have, as you just stated too, is a, a parallel, um, project, and something that, that at this point, there is no indication that, um, that it would lead us to not comply with the terms of the grant that we signed.
And if, if I'm, yeah, and I would just add, you know, um, as part of this, you know, again, this is design and engineering for bridges, and so there's going to be a lot of different aspects, regulatory and compliance, environmental, you know, all these other checkboxes, all the way down to pulling permits for the actual project that are, are also going to be part of this project as we go through and, and, um, and this is just the first part, and I just want to put the reminder, this is a notice of intent to award, and this is the green light to go and work contract, but then that contract would still come back before this Board as well, um, and, you know, and that's before any notice of proceed or any money's being spent on the project.
And I understand, Carrie, I have a question for you, I understand that the way that these grants normally work is we don't really get the one point oh two million, we, we draw down on the grant as we go through and do the work. So let's say we had the engineering completed, and we've expended money through the grant, we've drawn that money through the grant for the engineering, and now, for some reason, the grant doesn't go forward. It's my understanding that we do not have to go back and pay what's already been expended, because we didn't draw down the full grant, but we would not be able to draw further on that grant to do any further work.
And it is a reimbursement grant, so we are, and ODOT holds the funds, and so any, so they, um, for any of the environmental work that they have done, um, that is something that they pay their people out of that fund as well. Um, but if we stop at some point, um, then they would make a determination of, of whether to cancel the fund altogether, but.
But I will say, I think that's going to have to be a specific conversation with the grant coordinators at ODOT to ask that question, because, uh, I mean, any changes on the scope of work, the schedule, or anything like that has to be done by, by an agreement, you know, uh, to the, or an amendment to the grant agreement, so, you know, we can pose that question, and.
I have a question, uh, and I'm sure you'll stop me if I, if I step over the line here. But last time we had a concern about an, a, a grant timing and losing the ability to, uh, stay within our parameters, we would lose funding with that ODOT grant. This, basically, again, in that drawdown, brings us, there's, there's no jeopardy as far as then having more, more funds that we've drawn down on that we don't ever see come to completion?
I didn't say that there was no jeopardy, I said the two, the two are not linked, they're not related. Uh, there's nothing to prevent the Board and the county from continuing to move forward with the design and engineering of the bridges while we proceed through the Luba remand process.
And while there is, you know, there is always the possibility, um, like Ken mentioned, we have a, a very specific statement of work that is tied to milestones. As we complete each of those pieces of really the broader agreement, and then we receive those reimbursement, uh, we are not, um, defaulting on any of those activities to that point. So if there is a point at which we cannot go further, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have in some way defaulted on the previous work. So that is, it's, uh, more of a step-by-step process, so I, would be my opinion that it would be unlikely that there would be a request from ODOT to reimburse those funds, because those had, those activities had occurred just as agreed.
Unlikely, but, anyway.
I mean, does that help answer your question?
Yeah, actually it does.
Okay.
So as far as.
Does Mr. Schmidt get to?
As long as you keep your testimony, Brian, towards.
Thank you, Carrie.
The OBD, uh, the, the, what we're, we're acting on now today, Brian, is we're acting on the authorize the notice of intent to award the contract for that, it is not the work on the contract, it's not, this is just authorization to move forward to award the bid, so, if that helps, if you can keep your testimony along those lines.
Sure, well, when I read the text, it says, "and construction of a bridge," um, so I'll just skim through the rest of this. And also, I'd like to acknowledge that, uh, County Council member Todd Sado is here, he's not sitting up there, but he is in the audience. And I think that's important to know, right, he's a big piece of this, so. He's, what I'm gonna, gonna say does concern him, so I'm kind of glad he's here, just out of fairness to him, so. Okay, as you know, this has been a botched project, including a refusal by County Council to admit concerns into the record, my concerns despite my persistence. For example, on May third, two thousand eighteen, a county lawyer told the planning commission that, quote, "Mr. Schmidt's concerns are valid, but he is not located within this section of the trail." He said that May, May third, at the end of the hearing, at, to the whole planning commission just before they voted, however, I had specific.
Mr. Schmidt, I'm sorry, these are comments that directly relate to the Luba remand hearing, and, and, and please, if you could limit, it does. Actually, it does, this doesn't have anything substantive to do with the county's, or the Board's decision today on whether or not to award uh, this engineering and design services agreement to Obeck under the Connect Oregon Six Grant. You're talking about issues that you will have an opportunity, and we would encourage you to come back, uh, when we have the, the Luba remand hearing.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, there's been a lot involving this project, um, good and bad, and that you are aware of. Okay, I'd like to point out that in the requirements for accepting this grant, it says that a project, uh, must be ready for construction, or if the project does not involve construction, whether the project is ready for implementation. Um, and you can find that through the Connect Oregon, uh, literature, and I have cited it here. So I purport that this project is not ready for construction, and that the county is not eligible for bridge engineering nor bridge construction at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, we have one.
Or Mr. Schmidt.
One, we have, we have one more intent to speak, and that's from Chris Mattson, so Chris, come on up and, uh.
And welcome, Mr. Kula, and, and welcome back, I haven't spoken to you since.
I know, you've been, you've been hiding, you've been hiding. Uh, come on up, Chris, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Mattson, Yamhill, Oregon, I guess, enlighten us some new info. I guess I just urge you guys to maybe table the vote on awarding this grant till, um, maybe some of the few things that we can't discuss are determined. So just maybe asking you to wait until we know what's happening.
I understand, I mean.
Okay, thanks, Chris, we have one, one more, John Van Dyke, so John, if you want to come forward and state your name and, uh, address for the record, and please.
My name's John Van Dyke, I'm at one two five five East Main in Yamhill. And I feel that the work should not go forward until the Luba remand is satisfied. And this trail was pushed as providing better access for fire and police, and these pedestrian bridges that you're looking at, they will not support fire and police equipment. So were we lied to earlier, or what's going to happen there?
A question, um, not, not seeing the bridge designed, because we're just going into the engineering now. I will turn it over to staff to answer that question.
Well.
Excuse me, um, I was at the opening when Christian opened the bids, and we discussed it with him, and he said, he told us at that time that they were pedestrian bridges not designed for vehicle traffic.
Well, when I, I believe what I said was they were pedestrian bridges, we don't know what the design is going to be yet, that's what this contract is, is intended to, uh, develop are the plans, so as part of that, those considerations would be, would be looked at, so I don't, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
But that's a fair, that's a fair comment, and, and I think it's something that should be taken into consideration when we discuss the scope of the, of the design with, with the contractors.
And we'll, we'll have input, is that?
Oh, yes. So if, yeah, if the Board, if the Board chooses to go ahead and, and proceed with a notice of intent to award, then we would begin negotiating with the contractors. I don't know if those specifics would come up while we're negotiating price initially, but, but throughout the process, I would imagine, and Carrie can correct me if I'm wrong, that, that the, the scope and the capabilities and the strength of the bridges will, will be a key element.
Okay, and Ken, I think you had something you wanted to add? Okay, John, you have anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So what I will do then is I will turn this back around, uh, turn it over to the commission for, uh, discussion and deliber- deliberations, so.
I just want to say one more thing, if I could, I, I appreciate your, your willingness and understanding to try and make sure that we don't mix these two areas, it can be confusing at times, and I appreciate the understanding from the, from the audience as well, but it is, it is critical that we try to keep these things, um, in their respective lanes.
Understood, so, uh, Mary, why don't we start with you on this one?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, you can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, delay the consideration of authorizing the, um, notice of intent to award the Amhale's West Sider Trail Pedestrian Bridge Project to the Obeck Consulting Engineers for Engineering Services.
Okay, uh, that'll open up for discussion, discussion now, so.
Mr. Chair, I've had, long had concerns about the liability that the county would, uh, definitely incur, should there be, um, uh, stalling of this project, or, 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 or complete cancellation of it. The other thing I have concern about is if you, while this Connect Oregon, uh, grant is specifically for these types of projects, I think unless and until we wean ourselves off this money from the state, we're going to continue to see things, projects like our, our, uh, vehicle bridges that are in such disrepair, but we don't allocate money from the state, and we don't push them to allocate money to repair these bridges that are critical not only for our farmers, but for our citizens and for public safety vehicles. Yet, we will see the state continually designate money for projects like this, which are not critical, these are the, these are the likes and not the, the needs. So the two concerns I have is whether or not we're, we're going to in- incur more liability when we don't know what's going to happen with this trail, it's incurring some challenges, and we also need to make, uh, have a, sort of a, um, a policy where we say in this county the things that are priority need to be funded, and encourage the state to do that, taking this kind of money for these particular projects does not encourage the state to fully fund projects like critical needs, like our bridges.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Kula.
Um, I, I, I really appreciate that Brian, um, Schmidt brought up the, the, the concerns about, uh, grant funds and completion, because that was when I saw the agenda item, I was concerned about that, and I wondered whether you could, uh, if you were willing, Christian, to uh, provide some comment on the, um, the ORS, um, that, um, Brian Schmidt. that Brian Schmidt-
It's 215-296. It's the Farm Impact Study.
I think I was actually talking about the-
Oh, sorry.
No, the chapter 731, which actually might be-
Do you wanna take, give me my-
Oh, yeah, no, you, you have one. And I just wanted to make sure that we had that covered as a-
By, I mean, we, we applied for the grant some time ago. We went through the, the process. We were awarded the grant.
Yeah.
So as far as my understanding goes, we're in compliance with, with whatever ODOT's rule requirements are as they apply to this grant project at the moment. Carrie, you have anything to add?
The thing that's confusing is that this, unlike most of the other grants that we do, is a qualification-based selection. And so we don't have a conversation with them about any pricing concerns until after we award it. So we award to the person, then we go into a negotiation phase where we consider all the aspects of the statement of work, if we wanna add things or remove things. So those, that's why that happens in kind of a two-stage process.
And I guess just to, I'm just gonna echo, because what Christian was saying, you know, as far as the, the application process and the compliance with the grant program, you know, the, the county was selected and awarded this grant, and we entered into a, you know, a grant agreement with ODOT, you know, so we're already there as far as the project selection and where we're at.
Okay.
And one other piece to, to add, to clarify too, this, this contract isn't actually for construction.
Right.
This is for design and engineering, and if we were to move into construction, this would be the same contractor who would provide construction, management, and oversight. So there would be a, a separate contract for the actual construction of the bridge-
Correct.
-when we got to that point. A, a separate solicitation and selection process that this contractor would help us administer.
Mm-hmm.
But this contract itself is not for construction.
Thank you, thank you. That really, that helps me. I just wanna make sure that we're going forward in a safe manner. And I feel like in the information that you gave us, there was even a little note that there will be a section, once that first bridge is completed, that will there actually be a place to go to. Did you remember that? There was like a, a third of a mile trail or something like that that would be accessible.
From the barn south to the-
Yes.
Steg Hall Bridge.
Yeah. I was just thinking of that as a completion.
Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, again, this would be the, for the design of three. And again, if it went all the way through completion, the construction of one-
That's right.
-bridge. So there would still be-
The large one is right next to the-
Right, that's right. That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
Just south of the west mark.
Go ahead, Casey.
Okay, thank you. And then my other comments were that I, I really appreciate your comments about bridges in need of repair in the county. I, I stand behind that, that we, we do need more focus on the bridges in our county that have severe and critical repairs that need to happen. And I, I hope that we can make sure that our public works is fully funded for this maintenance. There's a lot of funds that we bring into the county for various things, and I feel like a lot of them are really important to different parts of our population. And I also wanna make sure that as we go forward, that, that people along the trail are acknowledged and that their concerns are taken seriously. And I also, as a person in that, wanna make sure that we do have trails in our community. Yeah.
My comments on this, I'm, I'm a little concerned with, number one is that it's, appears to me is that, I know we're up against timeframes to get this, this out. I still don't understand why we got to the point where we're up against these timeframes. But more important than that, to me, is that we're looking at a TMG grant to do the design, I mean, to do the master plan for the trail. To me, the bridges are a big part of the master plan. What are the bridges gonna look like? What are the railings gonna look like? What's everything's gonna look like? We don't have a master plan, so I feel very uncomfortable of issuing a intent to award or a contract to proceed to engineer bridges when we don't have a master plan that says what the bridges may look like or what they're, how they're gonna function. I think the point also is a good point brought up is that are the bridges, when we get into the engineering, are the bridges gonna be for vehicular, emergency vehicular access, or are they strictly for pedestrian access? Well, that, those are things that are determined, to me, during the master plan of the project. And since we don't have a master plan, I don't see how we can do an engineering of the, the engineering of, more or less, the construction, as Christian stated, because this isn't for construction, how we can do the engineering. And when I looked at it, they said, "Well, maybe culverts will work instead of the bridge, depending on, you know, the repairian and everything." Well, and they would investigate that, but we don't have a master plan to say whether we want culverts or bridges on the trail. So I have a little trouble moving forward on the engineering when we don't know, we don't have a master plan that says what the bridges are even gonna look like, so.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I just wanted to also remind you that OBECK participated in the conceptual plan process, and so they did a number of drawings of the three bridges at that time. And so that was part of what was addressed in the, in the TGM grant too, was that this was component that was separate, and that would be sort of folded into the rest of the master plan process.
Thank you for clarifying. I was looking at these two, but I should've been looking at you.
Mr. Chair, I would call for the question.
Would you go ahead and repeat your mo- motion?
My, my motion was for us to delay the authorization of this intent to award the Yamhills Westsider Trail Pedestrian Bridge Project to OBECK Consulting Engineers for Engineering Services until such time as we have a, a clear indication of the challenges that are ahead for this project.
Can we have a moment?
Madam Chair, one, one thing I might add is, when you say delay-
Mr. Chair.
Well, I was, I'm sorry, I was asking-
That's right, Chris.
Commissioner Starrett, when you say delay, we have, we have an open solicitation. We did only receive one bid. I, I don't know that the contractor is willing or prepared to keep their proposal open indefinitely.
Ninety days.
Ninety days. So I, and Carrie, I don't know what, what a delay in, in this decision means as opposed to simply a, a motion to not to issue the notice of intent and not to proceed. If it might be clearer for, for our purposes in our discussions with ODOT about next steps, I think if, if there's a delay, and we don't know how long that delay might be, that could create-
Okay.
-other questions. So if you would, would consider possibly rephrasing it to say a consideration to deny the authorization of the notice of intent to award?
Thank you for that. I'd like to restate my motion, please, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
On the advice of County Council, I would like to restate my motion, and that would be a motion to deny the authorization of notice to intent to award the Yamhills Westsider Trail Pedestrian Bridge Project to OBECK Consulting Engineers for Engineering Services.
Okay, do we have any more discussion? If not, we will go to the vote. The only thing I have is I just wanna clarify, and I think the opponents know this, I am a big backer of the trail, but I think this is a process question, and I have to agree with Commissioner Starrett agreement that we actually deny the request. So that being called, all those in favor signify by saying go ahead.
I just wanna clarify, and I will be to-
Deny.
Deny.
To deny it.
I made a little mistake last week on that, so I'm gonna, I wanna be really clear.
So all is in favor of denying, of denying the request to award?
Okay, thank you.
So all, everyone say aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, or aye?
So you wanna move forward?
I, I, yeah, I wanna move forward.
Okay, so let it show that it failed on a two-to-one path, that we will delay it as per Commissioner Starrett's motion.
Deny.
Deny.
Thank you.
Not delay.
Okay, anything else? Let's see, go back to my, let's go back to our agenda then. That will take us to item number five, and this is consideration of inclusivity proclamation. This was brought to the, more by Commissioner Kula, so Casey, I will let you lead this one.
That sounds great. And before I begin, County Council was kind enough to suggest some, some changes and some formatting to then bring it back to the board for consideration. Do you think we're gonna be ready by next week?
We were just discussing the fact that at the moment, the resolution isn't in our standard sort of resolution format. So we had discussed, depending on, on the discussion of the board, if, if the board decides to move forward with this, we could bring it back next week for, for final adoption. At that point, we could, in the meantime, put it in our standard format.
Right.
So would there need to be a motion and then our discussion, Mr. Chair?
I think there has, has to be a mo- motion that we adopt it, and then we can discuss the formatting-
Okay.
-later, put it in our formatting, so.
Well, and we also talked about some language changes, so.
Right, right. I, I mean, I don't know that there needs to be a motion if you wanna have a discussion first about whether or not this is, this is a proclamation-
Okay.
-the board wants to move forward.
Let's move forward with the discussion, Casey.
Okay, that sounds great. And the, the reason that I brought this up is we talked about Tuesday's meeting, it seems a long time ago now, is that it's, it's come to my attention that's really important to proclaim to the people of your community that everybody is welcome in our community. The, the language we talked about was that we wanna make sure that it doesn't imply policy change, that all services are free essentially to anybody. Because as Christian noted, things like recording fees are not. There is still a fee or public information request.
Well, there are, yeah, we have a number of-
So I wanted to make sure that we adjusted it for that.
We have a number of county services that we do condition based on economic status.
Right, exactly. When we treat people in HHS, Medicaid is only available to people who are, have legal documentation. But we do have funds for treating people through the state's general fund for indigent populations, so. Economic status in that case, but-
And we, if I could-
Oh, yeah, please.
Commissioner, we just, we talked about that in the context that generally, a resolution or a proclamation like this is a non-binding action by the board.
Yes.
So we wanted to make sure that if that was truly the intent of this, that we, that we had it worded and phrased correctly.
Yeah. And, and so I wanna, I have a, a few statistics that I wanted to share, some data, because I like data too. The CDC puts out every two years, youth risk behavior surveillance that goes out to everybody in the country. It's something like eight hundred thousand high schoolers. And it notes that electronic and at-school bullying is two times higher for LGBTQ students. Not attending school because of safety concerns is two times higher for LGBTQ teens. Three times higher reported for experiencing sexual violence and dating violence for LGBTQ teens. Two times higher feeling sad or hopeless. Seriously considering to attempt suicide is three and a half times higher. And one thing we can do as the leaders in this community is make it very clear through pro- proclamation, because symbols matter, that we are a welcoming and inclusive community to everybody who's here. And the CDC report kinda goes on to talk about how speaking up on these issues are important because it reduces discrimination, it reduces homophobia, it helps encourage a favorable view of service providers. And for us, it will help communicate support for the work of our workers in the sheriff's office, community justice in HHS with vulnerable populations. And the CDC report says, goes on to say that facilitate, that providers help facilitate access to critically important education, healthcare, and evidence-based interventions, which our county is really proud of its evidence-based interventions, so. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt it, and we'll bring it, kinda make a motion to adopt it, but bring it back to the board with the changes, or should we table it until next week?
You could. What, what, what maybe I would suggest is, is complete the discussion upon the board.
Oh, yes, before making a motion.
And then if, if the direction is to sort of instruct staff to go back, make, make the agreed-upon revisions, then we could circulate a revised draft for discussion either at next Tuesday's informal. And then you could make a motion to vote on that revised document-
That sounds great.
-at next Thursday's meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Then we would keep it moving.
Well, then I'll go back to you for, for the discussion.
I'll turn it over to you for discussion, Mayor.
Commissioner, my first impression is this is a solution in, in search of a problem. I know that in all the eight counties I've lived in, three of them right here, Clackamas, Washington, Clackamas, Multnomah, and Yamhill, that Yamhill County is perhaps the absolute epitome of compassion. And I know that in terms of county staff and county, the workers in HHS, there is nothing but compassion and inclusivity. I was a little concerned about the first paragraph where you are encouraging the county to remain a compassionate place for all contributing members of our, of our civic community. One of the things that we do as a county, and it's exemplary, is that we reach out to those who are not necessarily contributing members. These are people who are in some way incapacitated, they're vulnerable, and we reach out to people regardless of whether or not they contribute to our community or not. That was disturbing to me. The other thing is, when we, when we, we say that all residents need to feel safe, we, and you mentioned law enforcement, county, and city government or school officials to access critical services without fear, we are not in, we, we do not have jurisdiction over city government and school jurisdictions. So I think this is a little, a little broad. The other thing is, where you talk about integration of all residents is a vital concern of Yamhill County, and discrimination is a violation of public policy and the state of Oregon. We have, we have laws. We, you and I stood up a week ago Monday, and we swore an oath to uphold the rules, the laws, the constitution of the United States and the constitution of Oregon. And, and that is not only what we should be doing in word, but in deed. And that is where the rubber's gonna hit the road when it's what we do, when constituents come to us and they need services, they need help navigating services. We're not gonna ask them, "Do you fit into any particular category?" We're gonna go and we're gonna navigate those systems for them, and I think that's done here. The, there are, there are laws that preclude, for instance, according to the Oregon Constitution, Article, Section, Article 2, every citizen of the United States is entitled to vote. This proclamation says that the use of county services or benefits should not be conditioned upon immigration status. Well, we also do E-Verify, which at the county level were required by the federal government to ascertain someone's legal immigration status. So either we don't like those laws and we try to change them at the federal level, or we recognize that those are laws that we have in place. The other thing is, is that we have the equal opportunity employment restrictions when it comes to hiring people. Our, our sheriff's office has to, has to deal with some very loosened, however, ICE mandates. So I think that this is a compassionate place, and I've never seen anything that would say that we are not, or that we foster an opportunity for people to do anything. But we don't have control over what people do in the community. It's gonna have to be how we, how we walk, not how we talk. So if we do this proclamation, I think it needs to be cleaned up so that we're not in violation of federal laws and that we also are not making the implication that this county is in some way deficient in compassion. Anyway, my two cents.
I guess my, my two cents worth is, is I like the way you started your comments, Mayor. I read the proclamation that Commissioner Kula just said, and my concern was basically, and Christian answered one of them, was by so, by this proclamation, what is the liability to Yamhill County? We talk about, you know, we are very compassionate, and I, I think, I've never, I've lived here all my life, so maybe I don't know other, other counties, but we are very, we are very compassionate. I think not just the things that Christian brought up as far as the licensing and, you know, our services and everything, what other things, I tried to come up, what other things would a proclamation like this require us to maybe fund at the county level that we're not funding now? So last night, I did considerable hours of research on inclusive communities, you know, on inclusivity and everything, and actually found areas where it does put a liability on the governmental organizations that they never even thought of. And then I think you said it perfectly by, you know, we, we're, we have things on equal employment opportunity. We have things on what the sheriff's department can and is for, is mandated to do. I don't wanna get involved in national issues, and I think the whole immigration issue is a national issue. Not only does it pertain to Yamhill County, but it pertains to everybody. So I like the, I like the proclamation, but there were certain things in it that I didn't care for, so until- were certain things in it that I didn't care for. So until I see a reading of what it could potentially look like, I, I, I could not support your motion, Casey, to approve it, even if it was rewound until I see what it would. Really, because there, I do have some definitely concerns with this. I think when you said it could open a bigger problem than exists, I think it's because we are very compassionate, and I'm afraid that we lose the good things we do with a proclamation like this. By default, we lose a lot of the things we do by restating we do those things already.
And medical services, we have something called.
Oh, may I, may I respond?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just thinking of, in terms of the timing of.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Comments.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, is that okay, Chair?
Sure.
Okay.
We're in a discussion, you can resp, you can respond.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was like a.
No.
I'm sorry, I jumped in.
This is, this is an open comment period.
Okay. So I wanted to, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Sterrett. I wanted to note that this ordinance was, or this, this language was adopted and given to me by the mayor of Dayton, and this was passed by the Dayton City Council. Newburgh and McMinnville both have similar proclamations on, on file. We can certainly work on language to make sure that this is made clear, that it's a non-binding proclamation of aspirations as much as anything, rather than a prescription, I guess, would be, is that appropriate language? I think it's the appropriate language.
Yeah.
Um, the, I personally think that everybody is a contributing member of our community, and so I, I would say that I, I don't want to take that out because I think that everybody is, in their own way. I have a, a church friend who's ninety-five, and she says, I can't do anything, I'm just sitting here. And we said, well, you're the person we get to pray for now. Like, that's, that's your contribution to us as we, we think about you on a regular basis. And I really appreciated that, to think about it that way. I believe that the, the comment about the, the whereat, it was of all residents of Yamhill County need to feel safe to contact law enforcement, county and city government, or school officials to access critical services without fear. Some people in our community do experience fear in contacting those, and as it, as it reads here, this isn't the therefore we resolve portion, it's the whereas. So it doesn't, we are not trying to, by the language, do anything, we're not trying to, by our proclamation, affect the, the work of local and state and school and law enforcement officials. That's, that's part of the whereas. I believe that's how that works in the language. And then we're also not in the use of county services or benefits. There, that is not a reference to people who come to us to be hired. And I believe that e-verify is just for the hiring process.
Well, and that was a question that we'd had when we were discussing it as well, and that's certainly something we can be clarified. But the question had come up, was that something that might apply to county benefits or other elements of the county hiring process?
Right.
Thank you for clarifying that. We can certainly make that clear as we work on rewording.
And it says, and, yeah, exactly. Christian has suggested language to that, and, let's see, I think, and I think that was the, the one that I wanted to lastly bring up. But, and while you have expressed that you don't believe that people don't feel welcome, there are people in our community who don't feel welcome. They don't feel welcome because of the language from the Board of Commissioners in the past, and they don't feel, they don't feel welcome. And so I think it's important for us to proclaim that we are a place that's welcoming to others and to the people within our community already. So.
Just one question about the, the use of county services or benefits.
Yeah.
In checking with what we are as a county permitted to provide, there is a, a law passed last year at the state level called Cover All Kids.
Right.
And that means children of, of any, any status, immigration status are covered for medical, for Medicaid.
Correct.
The Medicaid services, other than medical need, are restricted to citizens, as is the, the voting entitlement to vote in elections. So I would be concerned that when we, you know, as, as Chair Olson had, had mentioned, what is the liability when we say the use of county services or benefits should not be conditioned upon immigration status, when clearly the state law requires that we make that distinction? And again, I mean, rather, the federal law.
Yes.
And state law to some degree. So I think if we have concerns about those laws, that we work to change those, but that the way it exists now, the significant liability under item two does exist today.
And I would, I'd love to respond to that, because going from some of the same sources that you have, we also as a county have funding from the state general fund for indigent populations.
Yes.
And so we do not ask people's status, immigration status, when we provide those services.
Provide some services.
Some services.
Yes. So if it's specifically Medicaid, if that's the thing that we are billing to, then we, we do, it is contingent upon status.
Correct.
But if we're simply providing services that are billed to the state for indigent services, they're not.
I think that we would really, again, run afoul of, of, if we were to say that this proclamation is, is, it is now adopted, without that distinction being made, it gets very cumbersome. But I, I, I want, this is not to debate the policy, immigration policy, what's good, what's bad, what needs to be changed, what needs to stay the same. But I do think that this puts us in a position where, and again, I, I, I think that sometimes proclamations, while the intent is, is good, I don't know what is the practical application of how we, how we convey welcoming people other than the way we do business. And I think we do business in this county in a big way, with a blind eye towards anybody's status of any kind of label.
I have a que, I have a question, if you don't mind, for, for legal counsel. You know, as I read through this several times, and I think it was raised here by both KCM and by Commissioner Sterrett, is that would it be possible, as we look at rewording, rewording this, if that's what we elect to do, to have worded to a point on that particular ish, on that particular issue, that being that we're a general law county in the state of Oregon, and we have to go by the constitution of the state of Oregon, something in that that says we do what we do, and we do it, but we don't, and we fall in, I'm not even so sure of the word, we follow the laws.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, if I could, to that point, you've all raised, in, in different contexts, many of the questions that came to mind to myself and Ken and others when we were reading this, is the, the various touch points around the county where we interact with, with citizens that could be impacted by a statement like this, law enforcement, health and human services, clerk's office recording, tax and assessment. So after some conversation with Commissioner Kula, accepting that, that this is meant to be a proclamation and a aspirational document as opposed to any kind of a binding board action, I think it's entirely possible that we reword that section two, instead of saying that going forth, the county will do A, B, C, and D. We will strive, and this is some language that I just came up with yesterday, it's nothing that we need, that we are bound to, but we could consider language along these lines, that the county would strive to ensure that all residents have access to and use of services in accordance with applicable laws, and that access isn't illegally conditioned or withheld based upon the various factors then listed. So again, it ensures that we comply with, with our existing policies, procedures, state, local, federal laws. But again, making that aspirational statement that we do intend and will endeavor to make sure that, that all citizens and residents have access to those services. Language like that is, I think, kind of where.
I can probably.
Where, where I think Commissioner Kula was initially.
Yeah.
Intending this to go, and also addressing the concerns that you raised and the concerns that some of us had.
Sorry, I was looking for the language during, in a previous proclamation, but.
I think after we see that, you know, I, I'd probably not have too much trouble supporting if, if, if it is, I think, I like your word, Christian, it's more of an aspirational document than a you-will document. If it could be worded.
I mean, that's what proclamations are for.
Yeah, if it could be, if it could be worded in that way, though, things that we aspire to, because if we aspire to, we're already doing it. I mean, we're, we're doing most of those things anyway. Then I think that changes the whole way that people look at that particular proclamation. So I think if.
I mean, I think that's what proclamations are for.
I think if you want to return it, return it, do some language, and return it, we could, we could put that on another agenda.
And item three here, I think, might be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christian, this resolution will take effect immediately upon passage and shall continue in perpetuity until revoked. I think we would probably need to remove that, only because we can't, there's nothing to take effect because it's not an ordinance or a law, or a, there's nothing to take effect other than we said we like to be like this.
And plus, we can't bind future, we can't bind future commissions to it, so it couldn't happen in perpetuity because we can't bind them to it.
Unless they do something else.
Unless we vote to replace.
And we'll.
It will stand.
Yeah. I think, Christian, you have, you and Ken probably have the idea of what we would like it.
Yeah, and I mean, if that's the consensus of the board, I can work with Commissioner Kula, and we can put some language together and, and bring it back to the board. We could have it presumably as soon as next, next week's informal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to make sure, though, that we don't do this to put off something that's more important to do. So if it's by next week's formal, I mean, Mary, I'll, your opinion?
Yeah, I, I think that knowing that staff is taxed with some things that are critical and up against a, a time element, I, I don't want to discourage Commissioner Kula from, he has this wonderful enthusiasm for this position and for the work, and I don't want to throw cold water on it, but I know that sometimes it's feel-good stuff we do, we do it because of our hearts, but I also think that we need our staff to be able to do it at a comfortable pace. So whatever you guys say you can do.
If it's to next week, fine.
I mean, I think that we have the language there.
Yeah.
I think we can put it into the new format and present it.
And then talk about it next at informal? Would that be something you, you have time to do?
I do.
Okay, yeah, let's do it.
Okay, I think, I think that's fine. Thank you very, thank you very much for bringing that up, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, it doesn't like, look like we have any more business. We don't have any public hearings, any, any announcements from anybody?
Mr. Chair, I'm sad to report that First Christian Church, which has been such a part of our community, is not going to be able to sustain their Tuesday, Thursday breakfast program, which you know they took, took over from the co-op, and that's because they're just not able to, to keep it going. They've tried to get other agencies to help out. So the last breakfast will be Tuesday, January twenty-second. So again, our thanks to what Jeff Claybaugh has done at that church, but a lot of these programs are not sustainable in the long run, and hopefully we can find a replacement agency to help with that.
I would like, you know, and that's really a crying shame, but I, I think what I would like to see is, and Mary, you could do it, or we could have staff do it, for everything they've done, to at least give the Congress a letter of appreciation from the Board of Commissioners, a formal letter of appreciation for everything they've done, maybe in a nice little plaque or everything. I think that's very appropriate.
Okay.
So if you want to work, work on that, because I think that's very appropriate, because and Jeff, he's going to be a big loss to the community.
Yes, he is. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Do you have any announcements?
I don't have any announcements.
Okay, I have.
Except you guys got to go to county college.
Well, I've got ten minutes.
You only think, wait to hit Corvallis.
And that, I had hoped to get this on the agenda for this week, but I, I didn't get your email soon enough, I think, was what happened, is that I would like to invite, I've invited recology, and if this doesn't work for you all, then I can rescind it, invite recology to come and explain how they can divert garbage out of Riverbend from unincorporated Yamhill County, and then provide an explanation what other services they can provide to the unincorporated residents of the county. So they're, they're prepared to be here on January twenty-fourth, and Ken suggested that was probably going to be, that would be okay for me to bring it up now.
I'm, I'm a little confused here. Typically.
I said, just to clarify, I was saying to bring this up as a discussion item about the possibility, because the invitation had already been extended.
Yeah.
You know, to be able to, normally we would have this kind of discussion.
At the informal.
At the informal about scheduling a work session. It didn't get, because I had asked some clarifying, we got lost in messaging back and forth, so, you know, so.
How about, I will make an announcement that they'll be here on the twenty-fourth.
All right, just want to, just a, a couple of things. We, I feel sometimes blindsided by agenda items that either don't come to us in time, so we can look at them or talk about them. And if we, as a board, making invitations to people externally, and this is a decision that, as a board, Mr. Chair, am I out of?
No, you're not out of line.
As a board, that we would decide, do we want to do that? So that, so each individual commissioner isn't kind of going rogue, that I would discuss, we would discuss as a board, do we want to do this, and to what end? So I just, would just want to throw that out there.
I think, I think you made a good point. Matter of fact, the administrator and I, Ken and I had this conversation about those type of process issues, and of course, I, I really appreciate Commissioner Kula knew and don't be gung-ho, and I don't want him to be any other way. But to, to actually, he'll learn like I did and everybody else, you did and everybody else.
Oh, yeah.
The process, because the process is as important as the end, end of the product. And so I think that that's true, that usually these kind of things, and I learned the hard way, too.
I did, too.
These kind of things are brought during a workstation for discussion, so the board can decide if they want to move.
And, and I thought it was on the agenda, so that's why.
But that's okay.
And so what I will do is I will place it on the agenda.
To talk about, to discuss.
To talk about on, for the twenty-second, for the informal session.
Okay, and as far as the extended invitations?
I'll hold it for now.
Or just tell them to hang, hang tight?
Yes, exactly.
Not that they're being disinvited, but maybe we're gonna.
Wait a minute, I've heard that someplace at the national level, or did I hear that? Okay, do we have any, any more announcements? I would like to just thank the commissioners. It's for the first day and a half, our meeting and a half that I've conducted the meeting. I think they've been very productive meetings, and I appreciate everybody's input. You know, every chair brings his own sty, own little style, and we all have an opportunity to do it. But I think what I've seen so far, I really like between the working, interactions between the three commissioners and staff. So I'd like to thank you both for your, for your efforts.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Nothing else, meeting adjourned.